It's three o'clock, is everybody ready? Okay. Well, it's been a long time since we've seen each other, so glad to see everybody here today. Okay, before we hear the cases today, I have a statement to read. This is a public hearing, and we are the zoning board of adjustment for Putnam County, Florida. We operate under the authority of Articles 11 and 12 of the Land Development Code as amended. Board is to hear and decide appeals challenging final determinations made by the Planning and Development Services Department under the Land Development Code and to hear the zoning code in a particular case where because of unusual circumstances, a literal enforcement of our zoning code would reduce, would result in undue and unnecessary hardship. The zoning code permits us to authorize variances only for height, size of structure, size of yards, and spaces. If we grant a variance, we may impose reasonable conditions on the use of the property which must be satisfied if the variance is to remain valid. The standards we use in deciding whether or not to grant a variance are listed in Section forty-five dash eight-three-three of the Land Development Code. I am skipping over a special use permit section because we only have variances today. Pursuant, we will call this case by name and number. A member of the staff will then briefly explain to, explain to us the nature of each request. We will then take comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Please direct all comments or statements to the, and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized, come forward to the lectern, and identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the board. This board will be voted on by the board members and become our final order. Any decision made by this board can be appealed to the circuit court. However, any appeal must be filed within three days after the board of adjustments has rendered the final order which is being appealed. Are there any questions? Before we hear the first case, all of those wishing to speak need to be sworn in, so will the notary please administer the oath. Okay, before we hear the first case, our attorney, Mr. Perry, has something he would like to address.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd simply like to, once again, caution our board members that you must avoid engaging in ex parte communications. That includes conversations between yourselves as it relates to cases. If you do engage in an ex parte communication, it needs to be reported before the case is actually heard to see if there's any kind of conflict that arises as a result of that conversation. If you have any questions, something comes up, and you need to speak to someone about an issue with the ZBOA, I encourage you to contact our clerk, Jenny, or contact me. Madam Chair, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Okay, clarification. Normally, whenever we do a roll call for site visit, we would tell that we had an ex parte communication or not. So you want it, you want it to disclose prior to, prior to hearing the case?
You can, as long as we have it before the case is heard.
Okay, well then, the case would be heard before we did our site visits, so it needs to be done now?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a roll call to say us no, we had ex parte communication or not?
You can if you'd like.
Okay.
No.
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 No. Okay. All right, I guess we're ready to proceed. Our first case today is variance twenty-two dash zero-zero-five.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and board members. This is an application for a variance by Don and Michael Castro for a parcel located at one-twelve Roberts Boulevard that has a future land use designation of urban service and zoning district is residential one-A. On the subject parcel, it totals point-two-zero acres and is located within the San Mateo State's Unit One Recorded Subdivision, recorded in map or page twenty-six, and recorded March fourth, nineteen fifty-seven. The parcel has R-one-A zoning, which requires seventy-five foot of frontage and a minimum seventy-five hundred square feet of lot size, which the parcel meets. The parcel was given a notice of violation in May of the year for a carport encroaching into the side and front setbacks and for not pulling a building permit for the carport. And encroaches into the ten-foot required side setback up to two, it's at two-point-seven feet from the parcel. And, and the front setback, the twenty-five foot front setback is five-point-five feet from that. The permit, a building permit cannot be pulled until a variance is granted for this, which is why the applicant has made this request.
Would you hold the mic closer?
Sure, I can.
Thank you.
So currently, the applicant's requesting a variance to allow the carport to encroach into the current setbacks to allow protection for their new boat. The structure is approximately two-hundred square feet. If the structure would have been a hundred-and-fifty square feet, the permitted side setback would have been three feet. However, it exceeds that hundred-and-fifty square foot limit. The applicant states that there's an existing drain field to the south of the parcel, which is pushing the carport into the front setback. And staff does believe that the carport could have been pushed further back, however, it has been secured with hurricane anchors, so I don't believe that it can be pushed in further back. Further, further mitigation with plant materials such as trees offering or mitigating from any kind of visual impacts probably would not be possible on the side, maybe in the front. With the aerial maps, here's an aerial of the subdivision. As you can see, the lots were plotted small in the San Mateo State's Unit One subdivision, so they're all, unless they were combined, they're all relatively point-two acres. The zoning is R-one-A all throughout that subdivision, which requires that seventy-five hundred square foot lot. It is located within urban service, future land use classification. And upon site visit, staff made some, took some pictures of the carport, I don't know if you can see them on your screen, if they're big enough for you, but as you can see, it's fairly close to that side yard setback, but the fence there is not, it's, it's not the property line, I think it's a little bit further to the west. So it's not a good visual reputation or landmark to use as far as how close it is to the property line. Here's another picture from the neighboring yard. It's a, it's a very nice carport.
Okay, some of our screens are not working, mine isn't, but...
Let me go back to that original picture then.
Neither's Mr. West. Oh, well.
Can you guys share screens at all, or...
Okay, I'll have to share with Mr. Stanley.
It's all, I believe there's pictures in the staff report as well.
Yeah, I see.
So as you can see, it's a fairly narrow port, it's not too visually intrusive. Here is a picture from the neighboring parcel. It has some vegetation, the neighboring parcel has some vegetation. However, there are six criteria that need to be met to deny hardship for granting of a variance. The applicant met zero out of those six because it was a self-imposed hardship. Furthermore, the request must be reviewed on its own merit rather than on the basis of pre-approved variances. Variance is authorized if due to circumstances unique to the applicant's property itself and not shared by other property in the area, there exists an undue and necessary hardship created by the zoning regulations. Staff is recommending denial based on the failure to meet the criteria, however, you know, we've, we've looked at variances such as this before, these are very small lots in these, like, interlocking estates, the San, the San Mateo subdivision, so we do recommend denial based on the variance criteria, however, that concludes my presentation. The applicant has some comments that she would like to make, so I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. So it is my understanding that she did meet any of the six criteria?
She did not meet any of the...
Or the applicant did not meet any of the six criteria?
Correct. Because they were mostly self-imposed, if a permit would have been pulled, and typically we see a lot of these because people, applicants don't think they need to pull permits for carports, which it does count as a structure, it does have the setbacks, so we do see a lot of these, or have in the past year.
Any other questions from staff?
I have a question. Is the front fence in compliance?
I believe that...
As far as setback, and, I mean, it's legal?
It, yeah, the fence is legal, it meets the high requirements, it looks like it's right on the property line, which is...
Okay, and this carport sits behind the fence?
It sits behind the fence, correct.
I mean, it's, what, two, two-something, we'd say two-point-seven?
Two-point-seven feet, yeah, to the property line. Like I said, the visual representation of the fence, it's a little further in the property, it's not, it's not on the property line right there.
Right.
So, just wanted to point that out.
Okay, Mr. Fisher.
If it were to pass, what would they have to do still?
Just pull, just pull a building permit.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, before we hear from the applicant, let's do a site visit roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay, the applicant, Don Michelle Castro, are you here today? Would you like to come and address the board?
My name is Don.
Wait, before you get, we need to speak into the mic. Give your name and address for the record.
My name is Don Michelle Castro.
Pull it down a little bit.
I reside at one-twelve Roberts Boulevard in San Mateo, Florida. The first of the year in January, my husband and I had wanted to cover our boat, which we had previously gotten, maybe a year or so before that, noticed how the sun was damaging the material, the seating and the outside of the boat, so we decided to put a canopy over it, but we didn't want an ordinary canopy that would blow away in the wind. So we put a lot of thought and time into this, and we got a nice one, and if we were going to do it, I wanted something that would last through a hurricane and, you know, hold up those damages. I did not pull a permit, and the reason why is it's my fault, but when we did purchase the, the building, the carport, we were asked, do you want to pull a permit? And our question was, do we need to pull a permit? Because we would want to, if you need to, of course, and he said, no, you don't have to for this building. So we thought, okay, it's a carport, that's probably why we don't have to pull one, so we did not pull one. But construction was delayed until May, it was built in May. As, at the end of the build is when y'all had gotten a notice that it had been put up without a permit.
Well, let me correct you, we didn't get a notice, maybe codes enforcement got a notice, but not this board?
Code enforcement, yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Code enforcement had met me at the house and told me, you know, the things that I had done, and if I wanted to pursue this, I would need to come in to start a variance setback. And so that's what brings me here today. If we put a bolt in that to move it, it does warranty, or it, it declines the warranty from the hurricane, it would not, they would not recommend it be in hurricane safety if they had to pick it up to move it, even if I were to move it to another location, if someone bought it for me, it would not have a warranty at that time.
Okay, you want to elaborate on that? If it's, if, if it's bolted to a concrete slab, why wouldn't it have, I mean, that's the company's policy?
If they, if they move it, it voids, it voids their warranty, yes ma'am. And, and it, there is in your document a statement that says that from them in the packet that you received.
But it was their fault they put it there, so...
Well, it was my fault to begin with for not knowing I needed to pull a permit, no matter what someone had told me, and I've learned a very valuable lesson. I'm born and raised here in Putnam County, I've lived here fifty-nine years, I've been in that residence for twenty-eight years. I would never do anything with the intention of doing anything wrong to my county or my neighbors, I, I just would not, and I wished I could turn the clock back, and I can't.
Okay. Any questions from the board, from Miss Castro? Mr. Fisher? Go ahead.
Have the neighbors had any comments on it?
All of our neighbors has been satisfied, and they've congratulated, told us how good it looked. I did take consideration of the color of our house, and we went with pedaling to, to emphasize the, the color to the house, to the carport. Nobody's brought anything to me negative, I've only heard, everybody thinks it really dresses up the front of the, right, and very beginning of our roadway, before, you know, like, the first three or four houses before you get into our rural community, and they said it really brightens it up. I, I myself have not heard any negativities.
Chairman, if I may, if we may add to that, we do send those out to people within three hundred feet of the property line of her parcel, and staff did not receive any comments back either.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
Staff didn't receive any comments back from the neighboring parcels.
Oh, okay, yeah, whenever you send out the three hundred feet, okay, no objections? Okay, or no, okay.
How did, how did code enforcement know, know about it? How were they informed?
Actually, I pulled the code enforcement file, and it looks as though the sheriff's office is the one that called it in.
Sheriff's office called it in?
Yes, that's, that's what it says on the, on the file, so. I tried to dig further, but that's about all I got.
Who planted the lilies on the neighbor's side? Is that on your property?
Yes, ma'am, that's on my neighbor's property, and I've been there for twenty-eight years, them lilies has been there for twenty-eight years plus, and they're beautiful when they bloom, so I don't mind them at all.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Castro.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in opposition? No one is coming forward. You didn't get sworn in, so you have to be sworn in before you can speak. Would you swear in, Ms. Fullerton?
Sure. I'm Fullerton, one-oh-five Park Drive, Satsuma Corner, and I live kind of catty corner from where Michael and Michelle live. If you go down to the end of Park Drive, at the very corner there, she is like at a diagonal, she's, I got the letter in the mail, no objection whatsoever to her putting that, the carport there, and I have no idea who called within, I, I have no idea, but anyways, it is not a nice one, it looks very nice, and it complements the house because the colors that they chose are similar to the colors of the house.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Fullerton? All right, thank you. Okay, since we had someone speaking for, I'm going to ask again anyone speaking against. At this time, nobody's coming forward, so we'll close it to the public and open it up for board discussion and motion. Anybody?
Well, I have a comment. When I did the site visit, I made a loop through the neighborhood, and I noticed that many houses have structures that seem to be close to the setback, and it did not seem like their canopy carport stood out or was any different from many of the other houses in the neighborhood. And it was nice, nicely built, matching the house. I don't, I don't think that by granting the variance that it would give them any special treatment over their neighbors, their neighbors could go through the same process to apply for a variance.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve variance number V-two-two dash zero-zero-five. Hmm, as it meets my criteria, how do I say that part?
No, just as I said.
As it meets the criteria for a variance that's required by Section forty-five dash eight-three-three of the Putnam County Land Development Code with the conditions recommended by staff and authorize the chair to sign the final order.
Second. Now, we have a motion in second to approve variance two-two dash zero-zero-five, is there any further discussion? If not, all of those in favors, raise the right hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, unanimous, so you've been granted your variance, but however, there's still a thirty-day appeal process, so just... Okay, we're next, for the, the next case is variance two-two dash zero-zero-eight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. The applicant for this request is Mr. John White. The location of the property has an unassigned nine-one-one address, but it's also colloquial, colloquially known as five-eleven East Harris Street. The future land use for the property is urban service, and it has a residential two zoning district. The subject parcel is point-one-seven acres and is located within the Glisten and Wells subdivision, which was recorded in nineteen eleven. The lot meets the area requirement of the zoning district and had a single-family residence on the property in the past. That single-family residence was demolished in two thousand nine. Land Development Code, Section forty-five, seven-ninety-six, permits a replacement home but does not preclude the parcel from conformance with other dimensional requirements pursuant to LDC Section forty-five, eight-one-five. An approved variance by the zoning board of adjustment is required to develop a parcel with insufficient road frontage. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow the development of a parcel with insufficient road frontage with a single-family residence. The subject parcel comprises Lot One of Block Nine of the Glisten Wells Unrecorded, or, I'm sorry, it's Recorded subdivision, and was platted with a fifty-foot foot of frontage along East Harris Street. According to LDC Section forty-five, six-three-two, the required road frontage is eighty percent of the minimum lot width for that zoning district. The minimum width for the R-two zoning district is seventy-five feet, therefore, the minimum road frontage is sixty feet. The parcel was platted as a corner lot, however, Date Street, which runs along the east side of the property, was not opened in accordance with Putnam County right-of-way standards, and the frontage along Date Street cannot be considered for this parcel. The proposed residential structure is consistent with the residential two zoning district and does not jeopardize public welfare or interest. Here's an aerial of the parcel. You can see the platted right-of-way for Date Street on the east side that was not opened. On the west side is two recorded lots that have been combined. Majority of the parcels in that subdivision are point-one-seven if they have not been Here's a picture showing the zoning. As you can see, it's all residential two. Here's the urban service land use. Doesn't appear to have any wetlands on the property, and it's all in flood zone X. I've also got a picture of the plat here. In the bottom-left corner, you can see that one of the lots is platted with a fifty-foot width. On the right side, I've outlined where that parcel is, and again, you can see that there was a right-of-way platted on that east side of the parcel. Here's a site plan that was submitted with the applicant's variance request application. Just to disclose, I did draw the outline of the site plan and had the applicant state where he wanted his house to be, and kind of drew that in for him. The variance request is the only provision in the Land Development Code to allow the property owner to develop a parcel with insufficient road frontage. Staff is recommending approval of the request with no following conditions. The applicant is present, and I am able to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay. Any questions from staff, or staff? Okay, Mr. Perry, I, we didn't do the ex parte communication because we were more specific, I think, for the first case, should we go ahead and do it for this case, just to be closer?
Yes, thank you, that'll be fine.
Ex parte communication?
Oh.
No. No.
Yeah, no.
No. Okay, if no questions for staff, then we will do a site visit roll call again, I mean, because we're roll calling two, three times.
That's what I wasn't sure of last time.
That's right.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it covers all the roll calls. Okay, the applicant is John White Jr. I didn't see anybody sworn in to speak. Does he, are you going to bypass us and let us decide what your fate will be? Okay.
Anybody got a coin?
All right, since Mr. White is not coming forward to speak in his behalf, I will ask if there's anybody in the audience wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this Nobody's coming forward. Anybody wish to come forward and speak in opposition? Okay, no one's coming forward, so I guess we will close this to the public and open it up for board motion and discussion.
Madam Chair, my move, we approve variance twenty-two dash zero-zero-eight as it meets the criteria for variances required by Section forty-five, eight-three-three of the Putnam County Land Development Code. There were no conditions by staff, and authorize the chair to sign the final order.
All right, we have a motion to approve variance two-two dash zero-zero-eight. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Okay, five-zero, unanimous, your motion carries, so you still have a thirty-day appeal process, so if there's any questions or any concerns, please work closely with staff, and good luck on your endeavor. Okay, the next thing on agenda will be the, I think, the minutes? Or old business or new business, I don't think we have any? Okay, the minutes for July twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. Has everybody had a chance to read them?
Need to be approved as well.
A second. Now, we have a motion in second to approve the minutes of July twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty-two. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
All opposed, motion carries. So is there nothing else for us to consider today? How about a motion to adjourn? So move. So move, okay? All right, thank you, guys.